Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham. How?
Good morning, Councilmember Durham. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Roger. Hello, Roger Randolph and everybody else.
Good morning, Mr. Durham.
Sales taxes, so those are up about five point three million dollars, almost 10%. But then if we look at the transient tax and the hotel motel surcharge, that's actually down five point eight million dollars from our budget. So that kind of washes, right, as we look at that across for the fiscal year. So in total, right now, our projections for revenues are five hundred and fifty four point six million dollars. Working projections are costs, um, five hundred and forty five million. So right now, we're projecting eight point eight million dollar net revenues over expenses. But a couple of things I just want to point out is we have taken into consideration here the fifteen dollars per hour change in the wages. Uh, and that decompression and adjustments according to that. It also includes the one-time payment for the two hundred and eighty-eight hours over the vacation. And it also includes, um, the pandemic pay that we had for employees. So all that is included in here. We also have put in a, um, a place total there for the 2% wage increase of two million dollars. That that is based on a February implementation. And even by doing that and with the additional payments, you can see that we're still going to be well over eight point eight. It will probably be closer to nine to 10 million dollars by the end of the fiscal year as things progress. Now, we don't know still, um, what will need to help with vaccines. So that could still come into play as we progress through the spring. And also, what's not included in here is the seventeen point eight million dollar FTA grant that we just received under the new COVID Act. So we haven't taken that into consideration yet with these projections. So I wanted Mayor and Council to be aware those items are still coming up. Now, we've projected then, based on what we know now and into the future. Uh, it hasn't changed all that much from what you've seen before, except for, uh, since our sales tax revenues are increasing greater than we thought, now you're starting to see an uptick in those revenues, and we'll continue to monitor that. And I will let also Mayor and Council know that, uh, Business Services Department is again contracting with Dr. Hammond to look at our sales taxes and to update our forecasts. So we'll, we'll find out more information from him over the course of time. But as we look, um, through the projections in fiscal year 22, we, uh, include, I'd like to kind of look at the salaries and benefits because what you'll see is you see three hundred and forty-eight thousand for fiscal year 2021.
Um, Joyce, sorry to interrupt, but
Yes, yes, yes.
Do you want, do you want your, um, presentation to be put up?
Yes, I thought it was, I thought it was, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, that's okay. I, I, I'm like, okay, I'm seeing it, but I'm not seeing it here. Um, Mr. Clerk, can you put up the presentation for this item?
Thank you.
There it is. Thank you so much. Okay.
So we did put everything for the general fund on one page, hopefully so that Mayor and Council just have it all as a big snapshot. But I, uh, as I was going back on the, the working projections, you'll notice that the salaries and benefits for this fiscal year is three hundred and forty-eight, almost three hundred and forty-nine million dollars, and then it goes down to three hundred and thirty-eight. Now, the reason for that is, uh, as we go with the pension obligation bonds, there will be a decrease to the fire and police budgets in the pension line. And that, that, that budget capacity then will move to debt service. So you'll see then for fiscal year 22 or beginning in 21, you see that, um, that debt service line goes from twenty-four point five million to fifty-five point nine million. So that's taking the budget capacity from those two departments for the public safety retirement, and it moves now down to the debt service line. So that's why you see a change in the, um, projected salaries and wages. In this projection, we have annualized the 2% wage increase, and then that is projected forward. Um, as you'll recall, with different discussions with, uh, Mr. Ortega, we do have a placeholder for a performance-based adjustment, which is about 3%. And then just, um, services supplies, those are, um, very minimal, usually around a 2% increase as you look, look going forward. It also includes other items like with the parks and connection bonds that we have, there is some O and M or some operating and maintenance costs related to the parks. So we have included that in these figures. Again, the debt services going up with the certificates of participation that we're doing for the pension. And then the transfers to other funds, um, those are just the operating costs for the TCC and for the transit system itself. So if you look at projected fiscal year 22, our projected revenues over the expenses as they are right now, the difference is about sixteen million dollars that we still need to find either, either have more revenue or decrease our costs. And all in all, going just across the board, um, there is a, a deficit between revenues and expenses. And for Councilmember Phimbres, I, I think you should be very glad that it's no longer thirty million dollars as you started out many, many years ago. Definitely with this Mayor and Council and how things have gone, we have really made tremendous strides in our financial picture. So we also include something that's called the cumulative effect on this particular slide. So if we go to the next slide, we take the projections and we look at the impact that that has on our fund balance. Uh, we have unaudited fiscal year 2020, and I would like to tell Mayor and Council that today we actually are completely audited. We received our letter from the auditors. So these numbers are what they are in the, uh, financial statements. We have the working projections, so you do see a slight decrease, but that's usually in our restricted in other areas in our assignments. And then we just take the numbers that are on the front in the details, and we move that through the whole fund balance projection. So you're just seeing that fluctuation over the course of time. So that's, um, discussions on the general fund. And, uh, Madam Mayor, do you want to stop for questions on the general fund? Or do you want me to continue with the HERF?
Yes, I would want to make sure that we give an opportunity for my colleagues on the council to ask questions. If I may start, I'm going to start with my own question is that what I'm looking at is that you're projecting and showing that expenditures will exceed revenues in both the year-to-date and the working projections. What are your biggest concerns in this aspect?
So
Are we, what are we, um, what's the, uh, what's getting us over? What's, why are we over?
Okay, on the actuals, it's a timing issue. We made our PSPRS annual payment at seventy-five point seven million dollars by the end of December. And i-if, and that's just, just a timing. So as you go across, as you go forward within the fiscal year, there won't be any more payments to PSPRS. So it'll, it'll even itself out by the end of the fiscal year. And that's why you have, if you see the working projections, you can see how that, that flows then towards the end of June. So I have no concerns with that at all. It's just timing. Not all of our costs are like on a monthly basis, like one twelfth. I mean, some of it is very seasonal.
Yeah.
We have like software and maintenance agreements. They're all paid early in the fiscal year. So it's just a matter of timing. It's just the flow.
Okay. So it's where we are now, but it's not where we're going to end up at the end of the fiscal year.
That's correct, and that's why we show the working projections where right now we're looking at, um, really about eight point eight million dollars of cash carry forward.
Okay, excellent.
And then again, to, um, just for that, just for clarification, we don't have the grant, the FTA grant in here. So those numbers will change again once we know what that, how they will be used within the operations.
Okay, and how it will affect our general fund?
Correct.
Excellent. Vice Mayor?
Joyce, on that seventeen point two from the FD, FTA, are we gonna just remind, give everybody a refresher on what we wrote that grant for? Because again, a lot of that's going to be restricted, some of it not so much. But that just because we've got seventeen point two coming in doesn't mean it's all going to be able to relieve general fund. Can you, uh, kind of fill us in really quick on what that grant is?
We actually, um, Vice Mayor Cunningham, we received a couple grants for FTA. The seventeen point eight million dollars, my understanding is for operations, and that will help the general fund, but I believe there are two other ones. And, and I don't want to talk out of turn, so maybe if Diana is here, she could shed some light on that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Mayor, while Diana's, uh, getting up to speed there, let me just also add, I think, to the Vice Mayor's point. So, so keep in mind that the grants that we received are specific for, uh, transit. And so the conversation really is, how can we shore up the transit, uh, the system as a whole? So one of the things, uh, that I mentioned in the materials is thinking through what this looks like from a fare standpoint as well. So if we make an assumption that no fares are charged through the end of the fiscal year, what does that mean? Through the end of the calendar year, what does that mean? Because, um, ultimately, those are costs that have to come from somewhere. If we can use those to offset that, that we'll call a cost, then all of a sudden, we, we have a broader conversation about fares. Um, and also then what impact that might have on the general fund. But just round numbers, um, if we have the seventeen million, but we have to shore up the fare piece, say thirteen million, then the value to the general fund may be as low as four million. It's just round numbers. So Diana, if you want to add anything to that, you're welcome to do.
No, sorry, and we're putting all that together right now, and we'll have more information, um, ready in the very near future. So, um, but yes, sir, that's exactly the approach that we're looking at.
So I guess then my, my follow-up question to Joyce and to Diana is this. Uh, on our projections, Joyce, are we assuming that the fare box remains at zero?
In, in this projection that we have now, it was not, it was not assuming till the end of the fiscal year to be zero. It's the last direction that Mayor and Council gave.
So my suggestion would be to probably back that, whatever it is. The fare box is what, three and a half mil or something? In our projections for this fiscal year, I'm sure it's something pretty, we, we probably need to back that out because we're, we're not going to be able to, I just don't. Look, if we're able to reinstate fares, that's great. But if we're getting seventeen million from the, from the FTA, and we are still kind of coming out of this pandemic, look, the bus is hurting enough as it is. So whether we leave it for free or not, I don't think will be the end-all, be-all, especially if we're getting money specifically to do that. So I'd say that, that would be my first thought right off the top of my head because we're, we're talking about this FTA seventeen and seventeen plus. I don't want people running around going, oh, you got a twenty-five million dollar surplus, because we don't.
No.
And, and, and that's kind of why I'm trying to just, just, just draw through. I'm sorry to hold things up today.
No, no, no.
Really want to be specific about this.
Vice Mayor, I think you're right on the money, and I believe, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr., Mr. Ortega or Joyce. I, I believe that Mayor and Council had given direction to hold the fair moratorium until the end of this fiscal year, which would be until June. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, um, so to Vice Mayor's point, the, and as Diana mentioned, we're actually putting together scenarios to bring back to you.
Okay.
Because we, we haven't had time, and that was kind of the point that we were trying to make with Joyce's presentation. We really haven't had time to run the scenarios to give you the options, but also to recognize or to, to let you understand what impacts those have, both on the transit system as well as on the general fund, fund balance. So we're, we're in that process. Uh, we hope to have it done shortly. We'll present it, we're gonna, we're gonna actually present, as I mentioned, assuming no fares through the end of the fiscal year, no fares to the end of the calendar year, and then no fares through the end of next fiscal year. What does all that look like to give the council an idea of what impact that has using those grant dollars and does it, and how does it impact potentially the general fund?
Okay.
My, my deal would be just make sure you're working those projections into the five-year. Because again, um, you know, we're going to be doing this, that, and the other with the five-year. And what's, it's great, look, to come out of the pandemic and be in the cash position we are, ha-ha, round of applause. But the, the, the down, the, the downshot is, what's frustrating is to look ahead a year and a half and see that we're running a deficit again. And that's, that's frustrating piece. So I really don't want to. We, we probably have some things to, to, to consider here and see if we can, um, restabilize those numbers at least into 23 and 24. Uh, now, and try to, try to drive some policy decisions now that will, will get us back so that we're not, maybe we can phase into some of the things we're talking about and, um, and, and take a look at, you know, some of the efficiencies that we may be missing and see if we can find a way to, 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 to at least stave off the time and that we're running behind. That's all I'm going. All right, that's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think that that's the intent. The good news is that the seventeen point eight million dollars has been received. And once we have projections from, um, Diana and the city manager on how the effect of having a fair moratorium until the end of the fiscal year could potentially, uh, impact our general fund. So Diana, I did see your hand up. Did you want to include anything?
No, ma'am. Um, I, the, it was, um, answered by the city manager. I'm sorry. That's why I took it down. Thank you, though.
Any other questions by my colleagues regarding the general fund? Oh, I'm so sorry. I don't, I don't see you, but go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, my question, I guess, with the increased projections for the state shared revenue fund, do we have any idea where that's coming from? Like, is it just strictly sales taxes, like food? Or, you know, people going to the store and buying things? Do we have any idea on what that?
Yes, certainly. Oh, certainly. Um, so the, the state shared sales taxes has almost the same kind of categories of sales taxes that the city of Tucson has. So it's definitely in the remote seller, in retail, and construction. So those would be the three major categories.
Thank you, Joyce.
Joyce, can you repeat that, please?
Uh, certainly. So the major categories of sales tax that continues to increase is the, um, retail. And then the remote seller, which is, if you'll recall, there was a Supreme Court decision, and they called it the Wayfair decision, where those that, those, um, companies, retailers that are not within your state, they still have to collect the sales tax and remit it back to the state in the local jurisdictions. So that's the remote sellers, and then construction.
Okay, Joyce, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I do not see any of my colleagues' hands up, so go ahead with the following conversation.
Okay, so, um, the next is the highway user revenue.
I was, I was trying, I was trying, my hand wouldn't go up for whatever reason. Just real quick, what are you projecting for Meadowwana?
I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Meadowwana sales tax receipts, what are you projecting for that?
Um, so for this year, we're, we're projecting for the city to be, um, one point six million dollars, and then from the state, about half a million. Uh, that, that may be very conservative because, um, we do know that the state, um, has already started on the collection. So we'll know more as we start seeing the first cash come into our doors.
When, when do you expect that?
Uh, let's see, probably end of February, March.
Okay, they, they, they collected two million dollars in taxes at Grant and Treat since last Friday, so.
I'm sure.
I think we're being pretty conservative with the, with the adult use. But I'm happy that we're receiving some of it this fiscal year.
Yes.
So, any others? Um, Councilmember Kazachik?
I had one question, Madam Mayor. I just want to know, what are the, the state's restrictions on the Meadowwana, uh, funding?
Uh, Councilmember Phimbres, so the, the state's restriction, um, says that it's for public safety personnel costs. Um, and I believe, um, Mr. Rankin was getting additional information from the League of Cities and Towns, and it could be used for equipment. So he could definitely, uh, if he has additional information, and that would be public safety equipment.
Yes, Mayor, uh, Council, uh, Councilmember Phimbres, members of the council. Yeah, Joyce and I actually were just talking about this yesterday, and we're, uh, continuing to have discussions with our colleagues, uh, throughout the state uh, in terms of what those revenues can be used for. It, uh, it does appear that it would be, um, the equipment could be an eligible expenditure under that umbrella of, uh, public safety, uh, costs.
Does that mean cameras, police vehicles, or building facilities? What is, how do you define equipment?
I, I would think cameras.
I would, I would think all of those things. But we're going to see if there's any further guidance, uh, as this rolls out and as the revenues are released by the state, uh, and distributed, um, to the individual jurisdictions.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember, um, thank you. Mike, or Mr. Rankin, eh, in my participation at the League of Cities and Towns, the attorney there, hmm, explained to all of us mayors that joined that meeting that it was, uh, more expansive, the uses that, that, uh, those funds could be used for, including restorative work and, um, community, community safety programs, um, and other types of programs, and public safety. So it would be very good for us to know as we enter into this budgeting season exactly what the uses, um, that are defined in the proposition really are.
That, that's an excellent point, Mayor, and I'll get together with Andrew Greenhill, who's been looking into this and, and touching base with, uh, his, uh, partners across the state. And, and we'll figure it out, and we'll get a description to the Mayor and Council as your budget discussions continue.
Thank you so much, Mike. Go ahead, Joyce. We, uh, we've got to keep on track here.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, so we'll go to the next slide, which, which shows the highway user revenue fund. So as you'll recall, you know, those are taxes that are on motor fuel registration and operations of motor vehicles. So we get an allocation through the state for the city. Our revenue, uh, budget was fifty-five point nine million dollars. So far, we've collected twenty-seven point six million. The expenditure budget was fifty-six point eight million dollars, and we have spent nineteen point, almost two million dollars. So it appears right now our revenues over expenditures is about eight million dollars. However, if we go to the next slide, we'll look at those projections because, again, it's all timing. So, so for the highway user fund, one of the, um, outside of salaries and benefits, there, the largest other cost, uh, along with services is actually the debt service payment that we have on street and highway revenue bonds. So where you see that, and if we look at the, the working projections for fiscal year 21, you'll see that line where it says it's thirteen, thirteen point two million dollars. So those, um, street and highway revenue bonds, there's two payments, one in December and then one in June. So right now, we've only made the smaller of the two payments, and that's why when you look at the year-to-date expenses, it appears that there's more revenues than expenditures right now. But as the year progresses, again, it's all timing. We will look at probably our revenues coming in, in the highway user revenue fund of fifty-five point six million dollars. Our total uses are going to be greater at fifty-eight point nine million. So the plan right now is to actually use about three point three million dollars of the highway user revenue fund cash carry forward. So why is that? Well, um, there is, uh, an investment of about two point one million dollars for street and maintenance equipment, uh, construction efforts on hawks, and then some pedestrian and bike boulevards. So as we go into the projections for the highway user revenue fund in fiscal year 22, what you'll start to see is, is we have projected out the revenues, and the HERF revenues are not increasing as much as definitely the city's sales tax. I mean, that's, there's, could be several factors on that, even the change in how people are using more, um, electric vehicles, hybrids. So not, um, having as much fuel, uh, being sold out in the, out in the nation. So we are going to see either a plateau on this or just slight increases over the coming years, unless there's a change to the actual gasoline tax rate. So saying that, debt services, as you'll recall, our last payment on those street and highway revenue bonds is in fiscal year 2022. So you, you can see that line at twelve point six million dollars. So once we get through that last payment, and I have, I will say here that I've been waiting for this to occur my whole career, for those to be paid off, you'll see that that does start to free up available dollars in fiscal year 2023. The debt service that you do see there in 2023 at one point five million dollars, that's for the LED lighting, the street lighting project that we did not too many years ago. So in these projections, um,
How many years left on the LED?
Let me see. I think it was a, I'll, I'll have to get that to you, Vice Mayor. Uh, I couldn't, cannot remember if it's a fifteen-year loan or a twenty-year loan, so let me get that for you. Unless Diana knows off the top of her head.
I'm asking the question as well right now, Joyce.
Okay, very good.
Because I'm remembering it to be ten years, but you said fifteen years, so I want to verify it. So I've already, I just asked.
All right. Well, I'll continue then, as, as you're getting the information, just let us know. So in these projections, uh, what has been projected in here is continually increasing our street, our street maintenance and our roadway improvements. Also adaptive signalization for the smart city program, a traffic control center to create capacity and inefficiencies in how you move people through the roadway system, and then increased funding for other safety, uh, projects and programs. So, uh, all, if we go to the next slide then, that shows that what we're looking at here is actually using up the HERF, uh, fund balance i-in the, uh, next five years. So that by the time you get to fiscal year 2026, we're projecting about two million dollars left there with the current plan we have now. So I think, um, we're still waiting on the LED debt service schedule? And if there's any other questions?
Yeah, thank you so much, Joyce. Really appreciate it. What I, I look, I'm looking at the previous slide, um, where it, you know, gives much more detail in salary services, debt service, road improvement. How much are we actually in 2021 fiscal year? How much are we investing in road improvements?
So we did put a line.
Difference between the road improvement and the capital improvement projects lines?
All right, so the, the road improvements is, is just that. It's, it's the monies that are set aside to do, um, fog seal, uh, potholes, uh, those types of, of, um, road improvements. The capital improvement projects, a lot of that has to do with the dollars that we need to do for the corridors as far as match and other, um, larger capital projects that are part of our, uh, capital improvement plan.
So this is the match for the RTA projects? This is where we put it in?
Yes, yes, yeah.
So, um, all in all, it looks like road improvements and capital improvement matches is about, I would say, what, eight, eight million, seven million?
Nine. It, well, it depends on which year you're, if you're looking at this fiscal year.
Twenty twenty-one, yeah.
Yes, yes. So you're, you're talking about seven million dollars.
Okay. Okay, there's a line here for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one that calls out services, so there's salaries and benefits, which is twenty-one million, and then there's a line that calls out services for eleven. What does that services line mean? Where are we investing?
Uh, electricity would be one, uh, because you do have to pay for your street lighting.
Okay.
That would be one. You would also have other services for, um, other road repairs and right-of-way maintenance that has to occur.
All righty, so on the services line, which is eleven million dollars, I'm, how much of the eleven million is electricity? And what other types of services does that line service?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I do not have all of the details in front of me, but we could get that.
Diana, what, what's-
I don't have the breakdown, but I will definitely get it for you. But within services, uh, like, uh, Joyce had mentioned, it's our, uh, the cost associated with, um, the landscaping, the lighting, our utilities, we also have in there any, um, um, we do, um, outsource, um, some cons- some contract work for, um, engineering as well as for, um, construction inspections. So, uh, because we have seen, uh, the construction, um, area go up and down, um, we have a certain number of FTEs, and then, so when we're on a high, we use contract workers, and then we're on a low, we use our FTE, so there's some dollars built in, um, for there as well, and as well as for, um, some outside engineering help and assistance. But I can get you a breakdown of the specific dollars that we spend on, uh, under services.
That would be wonderful. So, all in all, salaries and benefits plus services is around thirty-one, thirty-two million dollars, and road improvements and capital improvements is about seven and a half, eight. Okay, um, you know, I think, um, really appreciate your presentation, Joyce. I, I, I am happy in, in the space where we find ourselves in terms of HERF and our general fund. We're very healthy, and I think that has been the, um, the work of our team, the city manager, Joyce, Diana, um, as well as, as, uh, the decision made, made by mayor and council. And so, what I would like to present to my colleagues on the council for consideration as a motion and direction, I'd like to, um, request an, a motion that would place, uh, fourteen million dollars for neighborhood road improvements into, um, both HERF and general fund for use in the next, uh, fiscal years, or as appropriately can be used. So, fourteen million dollars, approximately two million dollars per council member and, and for the mayor. In that way, we start, uh, you know, chipping away at the needs, as we all saw seventy-six percent of our residential roads are failing. And so, in order to, um, to provide the residents of the city of Tucson a tangible way of showing from mayor and council that we want to invest in our roads, I would consider if my colleagues will consider a motion to, uh, put aside within the next, uh, fiscal year, uh, fourteen million dollars of investment from HERF and the general fund.
Madam Mayor, can you repeat that?
So, I'd like to consider, um, a motion from my colleagues that would direct the city manager that we invest fourteen million dollars in this coming, um, fiscal year, uh, of HERF and general fund into residential road repair.
Okay. I, I kind of agree with you, Madam Mayor, because I know when Proposition 409 was, we have eighty-five percent arterials, fifty percent residential, and then with Prop, uh, 101, it's sixty percent arterials and forty percent residential, but it's still a drop in the bucket. So, I kind of agree with residentials. I, I hear it almost every day from residents about the potholes and things aren't being done, and I thank Diana and her crew for working vigilantly on this, but every time we have a rain or cold weather, it seems like it deteriorates. So, I'll, I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor, that, uh, is fourteen million dollars.
Thank you, Councilmember Finbres. I do, eh, before I, I go to my colleagues on the council, is there, uh, second to the motion being considered?
I'll second that, Mayor.
All righty, thank you, Councilmember Lee. You also have your hand up. Would you like to, um, ask your questions or make your-
Sure. Mayor, I, I just want to echo what Councilmember Finbres said as well. That's something that we hear all the time, is the, the concern of the neighborhood streets, the residential streets, and I think this makes a big statement that we hear those concerns, and we want to make that a priority. I, I do have, um, just kind of a question about the HERF and general fund, and how that combination of the two, um, you know, how that will come together. So, I don't know if anyone on the finance side could answer kind of the execution piece of that, just so we're clear on that.
Sure. Mayor, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. Um, if I'm, if I'm understanding what the thought is, is to invest fourteen million dollars into neighborhood streets, and I think the motion identifies HERF and general fund. So, uh, Councilmember Lee, what I would suggest is, uh, give me an opportunity to, give us an opportunity to go back and look at how we can structure that, and then what we'll do is build that into the, into, into the, um, five-year projections, both for HERF as well as for, um, the, uh, the general fund. Keeping in mind, I think the mayor may have been getting to, you know, we already put, um, somewhere around, uh, in twenty-two, about nine million dollars between the capital outlay and the road improvements. And so, what I, what I'm hearing is maybe a reprogramming of some of that to go towards residential streets, and then looking at fund balance.
No, that is, that's for clarity, that is not what I'm suggesting. It would be an addition.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I will come back to you with, uh, some thoughts on how to, how to fund that.
Got to get it done, and-
Madam Mayor, I have one question for the city manager.
Sure.
How does Proposition 101, sales tax revenues collected for road work and repair, enter into discussion with the HERF dollars?
Mayor, Councilmember Finbres, they're separate. Uh, the Prop 101, uh, projects were identified as a part of that process, so that is not, my understanding is that is not part of this discussion. Uh, that, that's all, that's on its own track, and that will go until next, uh, July, excuse me, next year.
Okay, so thank you.
I do see Councilmember Vice Mayor Cunningham's hand up, and I do see, um, Ms. Alarcón's hand up as well. Vice Mayor, and then Diana. Vice Mayor, you might be on mute.
All right, I don't want to be here. This might, I'm going to support this right now, and I'm going to tell you why. Uh, um, first of all, I thought we would go back to voters and ask for 101 money, and we're for a lot of million dollars, and we're going to put it, put it on repair, then what are we going to ask on the 101? The second piece is, we're also looking at pay from the county at some point to address some of our residential road needs. Third of all, I'm really concerned that we can, can we afford this? Are we just moving money that are just for maintenance and supply, and then we're going to take some money out of the general fund and fund this when we're projecting a deficit in two years? We got to have a whole holistic discussion about this. Also, if it takes our budget down too low, that, I need discussion of having discretionary or fixed money for neighborhood, uh, managing and so, to the future. Lock us into this, I'm sorry. I mean, I, I, the sentiment is good. Spend another fifteen mil- residential road here, the, the, absolutely, but we got to be aware of it. And the other thing is, is if you're looking at this, right now, we retire that debt, um, we retire that debt already in FY twenty-three, I'd rather that, I'd rather take some of our fund balance, retire that debt early, and see if we can use that to next year, and, and just, uh, put in twenty-two budget and chaos dispersed. I think that may help us do this, but right now, I'm not, I'm just not comfortable. I, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with the sentiment and agree with the, the, the aim. I'm not necessarily in agreement with the method. I don't want to lock us into this, and that's why right now, I'm, I'm just really skeptical about this.
Uh, Vice Mayor, you were cutting off a lot. I don't know if it was just on my side, but, um, we have to show the residents of the city of Tucson that we are committed to road repair, and, um, to be completely honest, an additional fourteen million dollars in the city, uh, is a drop in the bucket. Seventy-six percent of our residential roads are failing, and what we have to prove to the residents that we're not just going to go to them, uh, to ask for an additional sales tax increase, that we're actually putting our money where our mouth is, and using some of the savings from the HERF debt payment, and some of our general fund, fund balance, to be able to invest in their neighborhood streets. And so, it's very important that in order for us to line up a potential prop for, uh, 101 into the future, that we show the residents that we are serious about looking at every single corner in our budget, in terms of investing in our infrastructure, especially our residential streets. And I think, based on our budget, based at the numbers that we're looking at in terms of the health and the finance of our general fund, and our stabilization fund, and our fund balance, we can do this. We can do this. The only thing that I want to hear from Diana and the city manager is, is it, is it possible in a, in a twelve-month, or do we need eighteen months, um, to get, to get this, uh, additional funds, um, out in the, in the streets, literally? Diana?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I wanted to round back. I raised my hand because I had an answer on the LED lighting. So, it is ten years, and we finished that debt service in twenty-twenty-seven. So, that's why I raised my hand, and I would say, um, it would, we would probably, uh, given the fourteen million, we could probably be up and running within about, uh, I would say, two months with getting it out, because we would have to put the packages together, get them out to bid, but I would need the feedback from each one of y'all, of, as far as what you want me to do. So, as quickly as you get it in, we'll turn it around and get it back out. We're going to need an eight to twelve-weekly time to kind of get that pulled together and put it out. But once we get rolling, we're rolling.
And Diana, I'm imagining that, you know, we would do that not just on a whim, that we would put the money out into the areas that, that are, you know, within each ward, the ones that actually need it the most, those, those failing streets, and those streets that are actually breaking down, um, in partnership with the, in that, in, input from each council colleague. And so, uh, it wouldn't be just on a whim, on our favorites, right? We, we would not, we wouldn't play that. We want to make sure that it's, it's, um, that it's based on need within each ward, and, uh, with work and input from the, from you, working with, uh, with, uh, council colleagues.
I will take whatever direction, um, that y'all provide us. We can provide you all that information, plus some. So, however y'all had decide to craft it, we will put it together, and we can bring it back to y'all. And then again, we can, once you, once we get that direction, we can start rocking and rolling on it. And then, um, once we start, once we get it out and get the packages put together and get it out to bid, and we can move into construction pretty quick. That moves fast. Um, it's, it's the prior stuff, but we have a lot of that already available, and how you craft it to us, we can put it together.
Okay. Uh, thank you so much, Diana. Uh, Mr. Ortega, and then we have to move on to the next slide. And I believe I saw, uh, Councilmember Kazatchek, I don't know if he, his hand is up, but go ahead, Michael.
Sure, Mayor, thank you, and you'd asked me to try to keep you on target, so we're, we're about thirteen minutes behind on this one, so we'll, I'll try to make it short. Uh, so, so this is helpful, um, I think to everyone's point, and, and hopefully to give you a level of comfort. Uh, let me take a look, or let us take a look at this on how to get you to where you want to go. I, I'm clear, wha- what I'm hearing from you is, you want to invest additional dollars specifically on neighborhood streets, and you would really like us to look at the fund balances, um, which is both HERF and, and, uh, general fund. What I would also suggest to you is, uh, you know, I, I wasn't necessarily saying we were going to reallocate all of the seven million dollars that we currently have, but let me throw that in the mix as just a part of resources that are available, because it could be that Diana's already got some of those pieces in there that we, we can throw into the mix. I, I get the messaging, which is additional investment in neighborhood streets will, 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 will work towards getting you there. The last thing I'll leave you with is, uh, keep in mind that, uh, the, the general fund fund balance is probably where, where I'll be, uh, putting more focus. Even though we have a fund balance in, in HERF, uh, I'm, I'm sensing that we're probably, based on these projections, we're, we're probably going to scale back any additional use of that. So, I'm going to be looking hard at both, but I'll probably be leaning more towards the general fund piece. And then I'll bring it back to you. The second part of that will be how we, um, how we structure the program, right? So, Mayor, you mentioned it's based on need, good with that. Uh, carve it up by wards, good with that. But we need to have, we need to have some, um, some definitive, uh, direction on those pieces, so that there's no miscommunication, no misunderstanding. The, the last thing I'll leave you with on that, and I said, so that was, is Diana's ready to go in two months. We really need to think about that, and we may want to consider starting it as early as July one for the fiscal year. We probably would be into next fiscal, the next fiscal year, which is into twenty-three. So, we'll bring those pieces back to you to give you a better handle on what the timing for that might look like. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. I do want to take the direction today, though. I do want to make sure that we vote on this. There's a motion in the second on the floor, and I'd like to make sure that we vote on it. Uh, I do see Steve's hand up, and, um, let's, then after Steve, then let's go for the votes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my computer jumped, and so that, I missed everything until the last couple instances of mics. I heard Paul, and then I heard you, Mayor, and then that's when it dropped, so, um, the HERF, according to Joyce's presentation, the HERF is oversubscribed right now, um, because we're dipping into cash carry forward this fiscal year. Am I remembering that right, Joyce?
Yes, sir, you remembered, that's correct.
And, um, the debt service, uh, benefits kick in in fiscal twenty-three, not next year?
The last payment is next year.
Okay, so that's when the waterfall happens, and we really start to have a, a more positive situation in our HERF. The mayor was right, Paul's comments were breaking up, but my understanding from what he was saying is he was, he was concerned about moving forward right now. I'm also concerned about moving forward so early in our budget process, and, um, we haven't really identified what we're doing with Prop 101 yet. Uh, we're going to have to move quickly on that. Um, the, uh, the, the FTA money has helped our budget considerably. We don't know where we're going with that, and so I, I, I absolutely appreciate, um, the, the notion of, let's get money into residential streets, but at some point, timing is everything. And, and when we're talking about pay raises to employees and the, um, you know, the, uh, pay-for-performance deal that we're talking about, the two percent for workers across the board, and this as well, I think that the timing is just challenging, and we ought to, we ought to wait until we're deeper into the budget conversation to be, to be committing funds. Now, conceding, I was off the call for five minutes, and so maybe some of that was addressed. Mike, are you, uh, was that, were you responding to what I just said when I got back onto the call, or, or what?
I was, some of the more profound things that I've said, I'm sorry you missed them, sir, uh, but, um-
Hope there were notes, and you can repeat them, then.
Yeah, but, but in seriousness, yeah, I think I can get you there. And, and what I was explaining is, the focus is probably going to be more on the general fund, fund balance, simply because, based on what we're seeing, the HERF won't have it until twenty-three. And so, what I asked the council, basically told the councils, I'll- And so what I asked the council, basically told the councils, I'll bring back a plan. It'll have a couple of pieces to it. One is, okay, how do we invest additional dollars in the neighborhood streets, number one? And what's the criteria for that distribution based on, as the mayor mentioned and some of the council members, need and ward distribution? So I'll bring that back to you with the game plan. I think the conversation is one, how do we demonstrate that? And I'll use the term additional investment in neighborhood streets.
There was also talk about, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Steve. I thought you were done. As long as we give Joyce or now Jeff and the city manager the flexibility to tell us how to get there, I think that we will be safe. What I think is important for all of us to know is that financially, we're there. We're in a healthy place. And, you know, and I'm not saying this just because it's just me thinking this. I've heard it over and over from Joyce and I've heard it from Mr. Ortega today that he can get us there. And so being able to start making the decisions and moving us towards the type of budget that we want to see and the priorities that Tucsonans have told us they have for us, this is a good first step as we enter the conversation of our budget.
There was talk about using HIRF dollars for the back-to-basics idea that Paul raised last meeting. This, that's off the table if we do this, correct?
I think we still have to talk about the participatory budget process in item three. There's two separate items. I still see us moving in that direction in terms of participatory budget or slash back-to-basics, however you want to see it, but it's two separate conversations.
Yeah, but the dollars are coming out of the same pot of cash. That's my concern, but Paul's hands are
Maybe an addition, maybe an addition. I do know that Councilmember Santa Cruz wants to talk, so Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Hi, Mayor. Yes, thank you. I guess my question for clarification was around, are we giving direction to staff to include that fifteen million of HIRF as road, residential road repair as they're preparing the budget? Or it's like, it's a firm line item? I guess I'd need some clarity in case, like this is just a preliminary step and then there's still an opportunity later on if we have more information to revisit this line item.
No, this is direct, we're trying to give direction to the city manager and our finance to put fourteen million dollars into residential road repair in addition to the work that we're already doing with HIRF.
Okay.
And then as I see it, the back-to-basics slash participatory budget, the possibility of including additional fund, that's in item three. That's still, we still need to talk about that. So this is a separate. Separate from, I would say.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. So let's go to vote. Mr. Clerk, can you go to roll call?
Mr. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
No.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Pimbers?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
No, I think it's too early.
Mayor O'Meara?
Aye. Motion passes five to two. Let's go to item two. Time has been set aside for continued discussion of employee retention and recruitment. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to, hopefully this will be a shorter conversation than the last one. I appreciate the guidance on that. One of the pieces that I think is important, and we got into this to some level last time, was to talk about what it is that we're trying to do with employee retention and recruitment. And I've broken it down into three pieces that we've talked about before. One is cost of living. How do we stay up with cost of living? Second is how do we have a conversation around market and what does that look like? And then the third is the concept that I've brought to you before, which is the pay-for-performance. So I'm going to take them in order because I think it's, they kind of build on one another. So first and foremost, the city government, we have not been able to afford what I'll call regular cost of living adjustments. Now, we have done a variety of things. It's not like we haven't done anything. We've given one-time distributions. We've done a variety of things for employees. But ultimately, there is a need for us to be thinking about what the cost of living is on an annual basis. It's just the cost of doing business. And this is just something that traditionally we haven't built into our budgeting. But clearly, there's an opportunity for us to have a conversation upfront about what that can look like. Now, in the good old days, long before me, there was an annual allocation. It was as high as sometimes five percent, sometimes seven percent. You know, I wish we were to those days, but we're not. And I don't see those in the foreseeable future. But I do think that as a part of the ongoing discussions, so every year when we come and have a conversation with the budget, the employee cost of living piece needs to be a part of that and needs to be, I need to be able to say to you, okay, this year we've got two million dollars that we've set aside for that, you know, but we do it as a part of the budget projections going forward as opposed to being after to see what's left for employees. Part of what I've tried to do is build what that looks like in terms of of an understanding and quite frankly, an expectation by employees that we will continually go down that path. The second piece is the market. And I wanted to spend a little bit of time, I really appreciated the conversation last time. I know we spent a lot of time talking about police and going down that path, but I want to keep us back away from an individual department and instead talk a little bit about some of the issues that I see out there. It's clear to me, you saw the, I forget, I forget which council member, I apologize, had asked for the turnover in some of the areas, some of our functional areas, I believe it was maybe Councilmember Durham. You know, we've got a thirty percent turnover in 911 Communications. That's huge, right? And those, I mean, the good news there is it's not forty percent. But when you look at our ability to recruit and then retain people, it's very, very challenging in some of our areas, particularly in our public safety. I know that you heard from the police chief. I've heard from the fire chief. I've heard from a variety of folks that are saying, look, we're struggling. We can't make ends meet with the staffing because we're not able to get them in the door. And then once we get them in the door, how do we hold on to them? So we have to be competitive. The competitiveness is not just about pay, though. And I think that's where we started to really go down and get into the minutia of that. It's really broader than that. And I think Councilmember Lee and her, some of her commentary and questions really spoke to, what's the environment like as well? You know, what's the benefit structure? What's the opportunity for employees to be successful? And I don't mean just be successful and get paid. I mean, be successful and do what they're calling, follow their calling here. So the discussion when we get into the market is not just, hey, everybody's going to get a raise and we're going to, you know, we're just going to justify it. I don't see it that way. I think it's a much bigger conversation about where are we headed as an organization? And in our recruitment of the folks that are walking in the door today, what does that look like? We need to recruit differently today than we did ten years ago, than we did twenty years ago. And I think that the market analysis will help us with that. And one of the things that I'm expecting is it'll give me magnitude that I can then present to you and say, okay, if everyone in the organization that is behind market were brought to market, here's the dollars associated with that. And oh, by the way, here's a funding plan for how to get there. Now, I can tell you that I'm expecting the number's going to be a big number. I don't know what it is, but I'm expecting it'll be a big number. And obviously, given all of the discussions we're having and we just had, there's no way we can fund that in one year, maybe not even over two years. But if I bring to you a plan that says, here's what we can do over a three-year period for folks, all of a sudden, there's a game plan. There's an opportunity for us to point to the challenges that we've had, but also how we're addressing those for the staff, for the employees. Now, one of the pieces that you haven't heard me talk about is how do we keep this maintained, right? How do we, how do we keep it going? Well, the way to do it is every three years, you know, we get on a schedule so that every three years, we're doing an analysis of the positions. So that way, every three years, we know, and it doesn't mean that we stop for three years and then do it, but on a three-year basis, every position is reviewed to make sure that we're staying competitive. Because, and I'll take responsibility for this. When I first walked in the door, you know, we were trying to keep our head above water and as Councilmember Pimbers used to tell me, you know, every time we turned around, we have a thirty million dollar deficit, you know, and shortfall. And so it's all hands on deck trying to deal with that. Well, we're in a different position now. And I think the discussion is, how do we stay current? How do we keep up with the changing markets? And so the staff will develop a plan for an analysis of every other, or every three years, excuse me, for the market rate study to be accomplished. And again, it's just an opportunity to look at that. But in the meantime, that doesn't mean we wait three years. If we have identified areas like the courts, like planning and development services, these areas, you know, communications, where we know there's a problem, I've got to be able to react to it and bring that to you and say, look, we've got a situation here. I think in fairness to you, though, it has to be in the context of the entirety of the system. So I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about that market piece because it's important. And again, it's how the analysis is complete and we've got technical folks that are getting into that. But what I'm expecting is in April, when we chat about this, I'll be able to give you magnitude along with what that looks like going forward. The last piece of this is the pay-for-performance. And I know there's been a lot of lively discussion. I've gotten feedback from you and from others, the employee groups, et cetera. A lot of concern about it. And I recognize that and I understand that. What I'm really looking for is an opportunity for the organization to look at performance-based pay. Now, why am I having this discussion with you? Quite frankly, it's an administrative matter that I could institute just amongst us, a performance-based system, right? The key is allocation of dollars going forward, and that's where the policy comes in. But clearly, if there is an opportunity for us to drive metrics that are important to you as council and important to the community, we should be doing that. In my opinion, the days of, you know, just moving up the steps, if you will, moving up the ladder based on tenure are gone. I don't think that those are going to be back anytime soon, anyway. I think that it has to be some type of performance-based movement. Now, the piece that's really hard is objectivity. How do we do this in an objective manner versus a subjective manner where your supervisor holds the power, right? I mean, you know, they sit there with you and they tell you, you know, you get a, you know, out of an ABC grade, you get a B, which means you don't get paid based on some number, right? Clearly and obviously, that's not what this is about. You know, that's not where I'm headed with this. It has to be that when someone walks in the door, there's a conversation and then I know what's expected of me going forward. So I don't, I just wanted to walk you through that thought. I don't need direction on that piece of it right this minute. I've still got a lot of work to do, quite frankly, with the staff. My hope is that we can implement, just administratively, some aspects of this, starting next fiscal year. And then I'll be able to tell you, this is what it looks like for the organization as a whole. And it could be that I come back to you and say, that was the craziest idea I've ever had and we're going to do something different. But at this point, I do believe that it is an opportunity for us to drive some of the culture change, some of the things that we've been talking about to solidify some of the initiatives that you all have put forth for me. So Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions. I just wanted to give you a thumbnail sketch of those three topics because I felt like we were a little rushed last time to give you guys an opportunity to have more dialogue about it.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I think that when you bring up the cost of living, the possible, the possibility of two percent cost of living, what I'd like to see, and I don't see on your memo that was included in our material today, what's the, what's the amount of money that that two percent means to the entire organization? Maybe Joyce has that answer.
Mayor, I'm sorry I didn't include that. I had included that in the old memo and we didn't include it in this one.
That's okay. I'm looking through my
It's five point two million. Joyce, you can tell her that.
Well, no, I was just going to say, Mayor, what we did provide was the general fund. It is part of the forecast, the working projection. What I did not provide, though, was the full dollar amount for the rest of the city and we can get that information to you. If you'd like it broken down, we can do that, too.
Okay. I think it would be good to know like what it means to the general fund and then what it means to the the enterprise.
Okay, well, we did provide the general fund. That is in the projection.
It's been here somewhere. I know it's here.
Yes.
And the reason I ask that is because we, I want to make sure that in our minds, we know what that two percent means. Because frankly, I think it's really important that we have all numbers in front of us, right? And for me, it's very important that if we are going to do a market rate analysis of the entire organization, that we know what that cost is and how we're going to get there. I really want to see a timeline. I want to see what departments were doing a market rate analysis. Hopefully, it's throughout the organization. And I don't think we can make informed decisions without having that plan, that vision of where we want to be in this organization. As you said, Mr. Manager, there are departments that are bleeding because we cannot retain employees in it. And I'm looking at the list and I believe it was Councilmember Durham and his office that requested that attrition rates for different departments in the city of Tucson. And I'm just thinking 911 Communications Center. I think it was IT. There was Planning Development Services. There were other departments in there, including police, that I just want to make sure that we have the entire picture on this and really what the difference between that and a cost of living adjustment is. And even if our cost of living adjustment is going to get us to a respectable place within the market and how we compare. So that's, those are my comments. I really want to make sure that we have those timelines and numbers before we dive in with a cost of living. And I have also been hearing from different labor groups that say, hey, give us some time to make sure that this, that wherever we go as an organization, it is the, you know, it is the more, most fair and equitable way of getting there. All righty, any others? Okay. So with that, I just want to make sure that we're keeping on time. The next item on the agenda is time has been set aside for continued discussion of budget development and the use of participatory budgeting tool. Mr. Manager?
And Mayor, just like that, you're back on time. So we're good now. So Mayor, members of the council, this is a follow-up to the conversation that we started. We started it actually about a year ago. Councilmember Santa Cruz had brought forth some thoughts and last meeting had made a presentation, a very robust presentation about different processes around the nation. I think there was New York, Chicago and San Antonio and maybe some others. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to go over two pieces. One is the budget process calendar because there's some statutory timeframes that we've got to be cognizant of. And then the other is the potential for participatory process. Some of you have been referring to this as the back-to-basics. as the back-to-basics process and having that discussion. And so the first order of business, though, let's go through the budget process calendar. And then we'll go into the budget or the potential for participatory budget process. Keep it in mind, these are just talking points at this point. These are just some thoughts that we'd like to hear from you and get further guidance on the participation piece. So with that, Jeff?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Thank you, Mayor and Council. If it's okay, I'm going to share my screen with you so we can look at the graphic that was provided. Okay, you should be able to see that. Can you see the graphic? Perfect. So as Mike mentioned, what we're referring to or talking about really breaks down into three components. It's that budget process is the statutory process of establishing the budget on an annual basis, an ongoing input and dialogue process, and then ultimately, or finally, the participatory part of the process, which I believe is where Councilmember Santa Cruz focused her presentation last time. So as Mike pointed out, I want to talk first a little bit about that budget process calendar. When we look at this, the statutes and the charter require us to adopt a budget in accordance with certain timelines and calendaring. And what we've laid out for you in this slide is kind of starting with January. We're at the budget retreat now. And we're talking about participatory budget funding strategy. So that was earlier when we were talking a little bit about the back-to-basics. And then going on through the rest of that calendar, we have monthly updates, additional retreats, work sessions, and so forth. Really, what that is to culminate in in May and June is the adoption of the final budget, after the tentative budget, adoption of the tax rates and so forth. And what that really does is sets the stage then for going into July 1st, which is our fiscal year. And that allows us then to operate. But what we want to do is ensure that we can have our budget calendar met and meet those legal deadlines and meet those requirements so that we can start the year off as we should and be able to implement the strategy that the council, Mayor and council have given us for that ongoing year. And really, what that amounts to then is when you get to May, we start talking about the manager's final proposed budget, which includes the base budget and expansions, the required public hearings concerning the tentative budget, and the adoption of that tentative budget, and then additional public hearings, and then adoption of the final budget, and finally, the levying of the tax rates. There was, we stretched that out this year, and that occurred at the end of July and so forth. But ideally, it occurs in this June timeframe to allow us to start the fiscal year off in the right place and getting started without having anything up in the air and knowing what our budgets are going to be. So those are kind of the critical components. And this is a very traditional budget development calendar. I will point out, what we've added to this calendar is kind of part of this discussion, is really focusing in on what that participatory budget funding recommendation is. And when you talk about back-to-basics or some of the council members that talked about back-to-basics, that's synonymous, in this case, with participatory budget funding. That's kind of the name we've given it. We haven't solidified or anything what that final name would be. But it really is, the participatory part that occurs during the budget process under this strategy is establishing the dollar amounts and then the budget project or the participatory project framework. And when we went back and looked at the cities that were presented in the participatory processes, what their success really hinged on having a well-defined project box to work in, such as streets, parks and recreation, those areas. So we've built this budget process or put this project process together with that piece in mind. So I'll pause there if there's any questions on budget process as we get ready to, or as we, before we discuss the other components. Okay, hearing none?
Keep going, keep going.
Okay, perfect. So I want to draw your attention then to the bottom. So the ongoing input and dialogue process. What we've heard from the council last year and kind of through the process this year is that we want to continue to have that dialogue and input from the community. And we are differentiating this case between participation and input and dialogue. So what you'll see in these, in these plans are, in these pieces, are the components of focusing on, for instance, Move Tucson Mobility, a town hall discussion around that, unmediated comments from the residents via probably our OpenGov product, in this case, to get kind of open comments, some surveys, and additional surveys even on the topic of equity. So what we've designed is kind of a flow of information to inform and educate, which is part of the challenge, to inform and educate the community as well as gather dialogue and input from them. Now, these pieces, that are the pieces we've included below, have been really focused, are really focused in this phase on just gathering feedback and input on the process as part of the budgetary process. And really are aimed then to, by June, by the time that you as a council are voting on that, are really to, are aiming to gather information to help inform the broad process or what I would refer to as the macro process of the budget. And then that process flips over. And now, when we go to then, starting in July, we turn from the budget process into that participatory process, which I think is where Councilmember Santa Cruz was at. In her presentation and what we gleaned from that was then we've established a funding source to include in that participation process and by ward. So these would be, in our thinking at this point, would be done by ward. And we would conduct project framework, town hall workshops. For instance, you know, what types of projects can be done? Participatory process manual, as we looked at the various cities that have done it, building a, again, a good framework for how that process works and what the boundaries are. For instance, if you're using CDBG funding, there is a specific guidelines to that and how that specifically works. The second part in August then becomes the call for the participatory projects, how you prepare a project. And really, the goal is, in the first couple of months, is to work with the community at the various wards based on the ward direction to help educate them on that process and how to prepare those participatory projects for consideration. And then ultimately, you would have the call for projects, submissions, the participatory project, you could do presentations or fairs. And we'll work with, we would propose working with each ward to kind of establish the process that they would prefer and how we do that, a scoring, voting process, and then a report out on project outcomes and process evaluation and debrief. And I think that that's a very important piece because it closes the loop with how did the project, process work? Did it work like we'd expect it to? How did the participants feel about it and so forth? And I want to point out that we, in our discussions, we see this as kind of a very ward-specific activity. So each ward, working within kind of the agreed-upon project framework, would direct and participate and kind of guide on how these specific activities would go for those wards. So there's various versions of this that are more in-depth or less in-depth, more town hall version. So there's a lot of middle-of-the-way, middle-of-the-road ways to do this. And I just wanted to point that feature out. And then down below, we have that ongoing dialogue and input process. So we would continue, and we turn the focus of that input and dialogue to the participatory process, continuing to get open comments. How does equity work in the participation process? How does the funding work, for instance? Moving on to open comments. And then finishing again with that outcome survey approach to find out, how did the residents like it? And I didn't put it on here. But of course, as you know, when we get to December, November, December, it's time to reset and go back to the first page. So with that, I will open it up. I know I kind of went through that quickly. But in the interest of time, and really, this is for us to hear from you, what your thoughts are and any guidance you have for us. I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor, and take any feedback or questions.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate you thinking about this, these processes, you know, the regular budget process and the participatory budget process. And the regular budget process, you know, I think that part of what we need to do, and it starts now, right? Because we're starting, we're kicking off the budgeting process for this coming fiscal year. My vision is really, and you have it, you have, you have some of it here, which is having town halls and creating a survey that we, that community can give us input, feedback, advice on. And the town hall process, we've seen that we've had a lot of interest and turnout on the, on the process that Barbara Coffey has been leading over at Economic Initiatives for the Central Business District Discussions. Opportunity to get input and feedback. As Councilmember Santa Cruz said before in the previous meeting, the participatory budget process is different than the advice and community engagement and input from the community. So I do agree that we really have to create the participatory budget process. Like, what are the, what are the steps that we need to take in order to see it successful? The good thing is that we have other cities around the country that do this process, and we can kind of lean off of what they've done, what they've learned, and create a process for the city of Tucson and its residents that is uniquely adapted to what works here in our city. So that's my input. I think that for now, in this particular time that we have for community engagement is important that we define a process for community input. And maybe that is through the town halls, as you described, and a survey that people can, you know, just do online. Call to the audience should be an option as well. And then have you and other departments help us put that input together so that it's distilled and that we can understand the priorities of the citizens of Tucson. So I don't have any questions per se, but I just wanted to make sure that we, that what I'm understanding in terms of your presentation is what the city manager and you all are thinking.
Mayor, so I guess the, and I'll summarize that in my own language so that I'm clear. I think the way that Jeff outlined this, the first order of business, if the council wants to go down this path, is to truly identify the process and make sure we solidify what that process looks like. Some of the research that we've done, the cities that were outlined in Councilmember Santa Cruz's presentation, although they're up and running and they have quite a bit of success in it, they actually started very small and they scaled them. And so the beauty of this kind of a program or process is it can be scaled. You can start on the small level and then scale it over time. I think that, back to the conversations we were, at least what was in my head, was that I would look at differing funding sources. And, but those are all details, right? That have to be worked out because what's more important right now is the process. And so if we could get, I mean, if this is generally where you all are headed and want to be going, I'm good with it. Give us an opportunity to hone in what that process looks like. The piece that will have to be talked about at this level is the consistency between wards. And so are we going to be okay with radically different processes? Radically is too strong. With differing processes in different wards. And so that's a conversation that I think we will need a little bit of framework on. But I think that we can, we can come back to you with more detail, more meat on the bones. Similar to what the back-to-basics was. You know, we did bust, we did dust that off. And when Mr. Elias left, he left us a nice big packet of information. So we'll get that out and we'll take a look at it. But, but my suggestion to the council at this point is if you want to go down this path, let me come back to you with some thoughts on what the process looks like. And then, and then that really becomes the piece.
Mr. Ortega has gotten accustomed to me doing this instead of the actual virtual. Okay. So I just want to make sure for clarity purposes and for my colleagues on the council to base a discussion on what we have in front of us. One, one piece of the discussion is the budget conversation we're already having. We're already kicking off the fiscal year, what is it, 21, 22 discussion, right? 21, 22. And so how do we want, in this process A, I would say, how do we want community engagement and community input? The second piece of the discussion is the, what is it called? The participatory budget process. That in itself, because we need to make sure that we're distilling the input from our colleagues on the council. And we kind of set up a program with guiding principles and guidelines, how we're going to go about that. And I agree that we need some time, we need staff and mayor and council, some time to create that program, to put the pieces of the process together. And then we can start using it into the next fiscal year, whenever it's ready to, ready to run, right? And I agree with you that it makes sense to start small, get our feet wet with the participatory budget process, and then start growing it if there's success. So it's to, just to clarify for my colleagues on the council, and I'm going to open it up for questions, there's two different processes we're talking about. So with that, I'd like to call on Councilmember Santa Cruz and then Councilmember Fimres.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you, thank you so much. I was just going to tell Jeff, you know, thank you for getting us to the starting point. I think it's, you know, a good place to start. And I just hope that we can kind of continue, like, finessing this. And then as far as like the process for each ward, I think it's really gonna depend, you know, on the leadership of each board and each council office and how they want to do it. Because I feel like, at least for me personally, like, that's the way that I want to be able to, like, engage with community. And so I want to be very involved. But I think we all have different leadership styles. So I'm open to if different council offices, you know, want it to look a certain way for their ward. That's all, those are all my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fimres? I think you're on mute, Councilmember.
Can you hear me now? We have special challenges right now because of this, because of the pandemic. And we can't have folks come. And a lot of my residents who are greatly involved and want to be involved are the ones that are, don't have computers at home, don't have Wi-Fi, and a lot of them are multilingual. So how are we going to reach out to them? The other thing we saw is the CBD public hearings, 63 people were at the meeting virtually, but only five of Ward 5. So how are we going to track them also to make sure that we're getting the input from each ward resident that lives in those areas? You know, so those are some of the challenges we need to look at and be creative on how we're going to reach out, get that messaging. Number one, multilegally, dealing with this, bilingual information, and also Teams or Zoom approach, if they don't have access to it. And libraries are closed, so how are we going to reach out to them? And then tracking is the other thing, to make sure that we have folks from those wards answering it, not people coming and migrating to each one because they want to see their own projects done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimres. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Cunningham, and then Councilmember Lee. And I believe I saw your hand up, Jeff. Okay. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
You did. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember.
I've turned off my camera. Everybody gave me this time, or am I still?
You're still choppy, Vice Mayor.
I'm just, I've closed out every single program I can.
Okay.
Oh, wait, wait. There is one thing I can do. Hold on a second.
You sound better. Should we go with the?
I mean, is this going to work?
You sound a little better.
Okay. So I've got a few things I wanted to add. One of the main problems that we, one of the main question points is the cost of the program in the first year. Program and how it's going to, to it for short. I know we want to start small. We probably, idea of how, how small. Do we want? Um, I guess the, um, do we want to, uh, do twenty thousand or a hundred thousand?
Mayor, if I might, uh, maybe I can help with that. Um, I think what the Vice Mayor is asking is magnitude. Um, so my suggestion would be that we start small, uh, maybe at the twenty to fifty thousand dollar range, uh, just to, to work out the, the, the process. As Councilmember, uh, Fimbris outlined, there's a lot of complexities to this. And I think it's going to be important that we, that, that we focus on the process first. I think the magnitude is secondary. Um, and once we're up and running in future years or even, and it doesn't have, we don't have to wait for next year. We could do it during the year if we just allocate an opportunity for ourselves during the year. Uh, but that's what I'm thinking is it's something scalable that can give us an opportunity to do something meaningful. Um, I know that there was, there were thoughts at the last meeting to make it a much larger. That concerns me because we really hadn't thought about it in the context of additional investment in the residential streets. So I, I would suggest that, um, again, small, but, but we don't even have to make that call today. I'm just throwing out those thoughts so that we can then start the process of, of going down the, the development of the, of the program, uh, in the, in the near future.
So, um, we had, um, am I hearing you correctly, Mr. Ortega? Uh, you said twenty to fifty thousand because that's?
Small.
That's.
So that, so that would be it on the first ward? Would that be it for the first year?
So Mayor, my suggestion again is let's just start small, um, and then we can build it. Now, you could allocate dollars, um, as a part of the budget. And, and let's just use a round number. Let's say that you allocated a hundred thousand per ward or even, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars per ward, fine. But the first round, the dollars that actually go out, let's keep it small and, and let us work out as a team, all of the pieces around that. That's just a thought. And, and again, this type of a program, from what I can tell from these other cities, is scalable. You know, it's a scalable program where you can, you can use the same process for, for, for community improvements, you know, in parks or in community center, whatever it is that you all are going to decide to, to guide. But I think it's important that we start small and we don't go, you know, too big. Uh, and then again, sensitivity to the fact that, that we do have that residential road investment.
I, I really wasn't done. I was just saying.
I'm sorry.
Anybody hear me at all?
It, it might help, Vice Mayor, if you do turn off your video.
How's this? Can people hear me at all?
It's better.
All right. Um, the other piece that I wanted to bring up was the, um, the process in each ward. That needs to be ward specific. That needs to be, uh, completely guided by the council member staff. Um, I'm sorry. That's not what we're doing. We, we, we're not going to be allotted money per ward so city staff can guide us on how to spend it. I'm just not bored with that. Third, uh, we have to make sure that projects are outside of an existing framework the city is already doing. We didn't want to be duplicating projects or compromising things that have already been put into, um, plans, um, and, and, and then lose out as a, as, it becomes a, a net loss to that ward office or that ward.
So Vice Mayor, lem, let me help you out this. I know exactly where you're going. We should not skimp on a program like Back to Basics or our participatory budget. Let's, again, let me repeat this. This particular conversation on the participatory budget is a different one than what we just had. Let's not connect it. We've given direction to invest in neighborhood road repair. That is separate than the conversation that we're having right now. So let's, I agree with you. We shouldn't skimp on the investments that we do in Tucson residents and in our wards. So.
The other.
So as long as we are, we're both there. Okay.
Uh, I, I was just saying, I don't want, uh, I, 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 I had to do it together. I wasn't saying that. Uh, uh, have a pandemic process and a non-pandemic process. I think that's different. And then finally, um, team ups between wards should be allowed. So, you know, uh, uh, wards can collaborate in, in budget processes if they want with their allotments. So that's kind of it. I'm going to log off and try to reestablish my connection because nobody can hear me.
Okay. No, we heard you, we heard you. And I, I actually agree that we need to create the protocol and the guiding principles and the framework of how the program works. And I don't think we can do it here at the table, right? It, it, we should give our input in terms of our guiding principles, what we'd like to see. But we cannot create the program right now at the table. I think we have to give some flexibility to our staff, um, to start thinking about, like, how would we run this participatory budget program per ward? Get the input of, of, of each ward member and then, and, you know, and then bring us back as they're putting a framework together. But there should be guiding principles of, of how to move about it. I personally think that we can start with a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget per ward. That's not quite the eight-hundred-thousand that, you know, Vice Mayor wanted, uh, for a program like this. But it could provide some chunky capital improvements, um, for the ward. And especially if we're starting a conversation in terms of participatory budgeting. I mean, when we used to have Back to Basics money, um, and youth programming money, as a council member, I did a little bit, like a little mini participatory budget, um, process with our youth allocation for funds. I called in youth. I asked youth to tell us how to invest. Must have been like seventy-five thousand dollars. And so we could be really, really creative. But I, I do agree with the city manager that we have to start small. Not so small that it really does not make any sense and there's no local impact. For example, in Ward Four, um, you know, a hundred thousand dollar chunk could be awesome for playground equipment and for, you know, fixing a basketball court and, and creating a little walking path around a park that has been abandoned and hasn't seen investment. So let's think creatively, but I don't think that we're going to reach, uh, I don't think we can, today with the time allotted, we can create a program that could potentially have a lot of details in it. So with that, uh, Councilmember Lee, uh, you had your hand up and I wanted to make sure that I gave you that opportunity. And then Councilmember Kozaczek and then Councilmember Fimbris.
Did we lose Nikki?
I don't know if we did. I don't see her.
This thing's crazy. Yeah, dumped me off a little while ago too. It's just kind of random.
Go ahead, go ahead, Steve. I know that you have your hand up and we'll see if, uh, if Nikki can jump in again.
All right. So I generally agree with what, what's being said that, uh, we begin, you know, give the staff direction to, uh, begin formulating a process that can, you know, do, do a general outreach to each of us and have a conversation because the dynamics of each of the wards are totally different. Um, I am again reluctant to say, let's assign a dollar value today. Let's let the budget process sort of evolve because where those dollars come from, it may be HERF, it may be CDBG, it may be general fund. And so they may or may not have strings attached to them. And if we can cobble together a piece from here and a piece from there, it'll affect the, the amount that we've got to deal with. But anyway, but yeah, I mean, I think that i- is the, is the intention for today is to say, yes, let's have staff move forward with, with identifying a process. And I would, I would also suggest have them come back with some identification of what the budget can hold, what, what the budget can stand, maybe with pieces from different areas. That would be my input.
Yeah, that's, that's great input. Um, I don't know if we, Mr. Clerk, did we lose? There she is. She's coming back in. Alrighty. Councilwoman Lee, we lost you, but if you wanted to add your voice to this conversation?
Thank you, Mayor. It was my turn to have connectivity problems today. Um, no, I just wanted to say, I, I sent, uh, Councilmember Santa Cruz a message after the last council meeting. I thought I would say it publicly. I think it's such an innovative idea. I love the concept and from the Ward Four perspective, we are really excited to jump in and bring this concept and, and this idea to Ward Four. Um, and so I love the idea of scaling it up, getting the lessons learned, really building off of what we're seeing. So, um, we're just really excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So I, I think, let me, let me hear from, uh, Councilmember Fimbris, um, if he's feeling it in terms of, um, the participatory budget program and, um, what, you know, he'd like to see in terms of criteria or maybe a amount that you might be interested in just so that we can give the marching orders, uh, to the city manager and his staff so that they can start putting more meat on the bones of a participatory budget program.
Like I said earlier, Madam Mayor, I think that we need to make sure we can reach out to the true residents of our wards. We can get the needs and issues really concerned of. I think with the HERF action we took earlier, that'll help a lot because the major concerns are the, are the, are the residential, are, are street repairs and street needs and lighting and, you know, hawks and, and, and speed humps. So those are some of the challenges we have. But on this, I want to see, bring, the city manager's got to bring back and see what we can and can't do. I think we need to start small, raise it big because that's how it started originally with the, with the, you know, the budget process that we did begin to be at. And this is the first time I'm, I'm glad we're looking at this because all of us known is negative deficits, you know, budget deficits. And we've always been behind the eight ball with this stuff. I want to thank you. But the communication is going to be critical.
Yeah.
Yeah. And getting the, the people from the residents of the wards to participate is going to be a challenge, especially now with the pandemic on. And a lot of people are isolated. They don't have, they have landlines. They don't have Zoom. They don't have computers. They don't have wifi. And that's a challenge right now. And a lot of, a lot, my residents are monolingual. That's a challenge. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbris. The good thing is that if we were to, um, give, uh, further direction to the city manager to start putting the meat on the bones of this framework, um, then it would take us some time and I, and I can envision us taking it, uh, into this coming fiscal year, which would start in July. Am I correct, Mr. Ortega?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, teams is acting funny today. Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I, I really, I really like the concept of mixing and matching funds, like CDBG and, you know, additional HERF, additional general fund to create this participatory budget, budget. I, I'm thinking a little bit more than what you, not actually a, a lot more than what you suggested in terms of seventy thousand. Um, because I, I do think it, we could be, it, it should be, uh, projects that are, that are, that make, that are, that make a tangible difference in a particular neighborhood. So I'm thinking much more a quarter of a million, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Um, but I, I agree. Let's take our time. We have time to, to make decisions, especially on this program. I think we can be very creative with this program and, and, and make something, something, um, something good of it. Uh, but, but there's the details to be put on the, on the project and I, and I want to make sure that I give you that, that leeway. Mr. Ortega. So I think you've heard, I think you've heard, I think you've heard from us into what we're thinking of the, um, of this program and.
Mayor.
Direction.
Sure, absolutely. And, and, uh, you pay me to be cheap. Um, so when I'm asked, uh, that's, you know, that's a thought. But you bring up a great point, which is, um, let's do something meaningful and not, and I, I like the word skimp, right? Um, but let's not skim because I do think that there's opportunity. So one thing to think about as we go forward, I want to make sure we don't paint ourselves in a corner where it's a use it or lose it mentality. I think that it, it's important for there to be long-term thoughts where, let's say that, that we're able to, uh, fund this over a two-year period and, and able to, you were able to invest some amount for this. Well, all of a sudden you could say, you know, I'm going to pause this year because next year I want even a bigger project and I'm going to save the money, if you will, and present it to the community on a bigger, on a bigger scale. So I think there's some opportunity there. Uh, and I appreciate the latitude. We'll bring back some thoughts. I, I like the idea of, of, you know, putting together different funding sources. Uh, so let, let me, let me, let us think on that a little bit and, and we'll come back to you again as a part of the budget process. And then I can also give you some thoughts on, on funding sources. And I'll certainly keep that number in mind, Mayor, as we go forward, uh, to, to try to get, to try to get you all to something meaningful that I think could, could really help, uh, your, your particular areas, but the community as a whole. Thank you, Mayor.
So, uh, did I hear Vice Mayor?
I had one more thing about this project is I wanted us to be able to lever money from private sector and from Parks and Recs foundations if possible.
Good input. Um, would you be able to bring something, a draft concept, Mr. Ortega, in the second meeting of Feb, February?
So what I should do, Mayor, is ask Joyce because she'll be gone by then and she'll agree. So we'll commit to that second, uh, meeting in February. We'll, we'll bring back something more on that. Absolutely.
Good, good. I don't see any other hands up. I think that, you know, we've given you your marching orders. And, uh, let's see, we're four minutes away from two and I promised you this would be a two-hour meeting. Any further thoughts, Mr. Manager or my colleagues on the council?
Yes, Mayor, I do have. Um, so when we started down this path of multiple, um, retreats, it was a thought to kind of keep the conversation fresh, keep it going. I know that's been difficult for some of you who have other commitments. And so Mayor, uh, as a part of the agenda committee, uh, discussion this week, we had carved out some time for the budget, uh, going forward. And one of the things that I would suggest, if you all are okay with it, maybe what we do is instead of having separate retreats, uh, where we burn up, uh, you know, an afternoon or, or even a day, uh, that maybe we just utilize that time as best we can going forward, uh, so that, so that we're not having to carve out, um, you know, separate. And, and just trying to, trying to figure out a way to help everybody with their schedules and so forth. I know this is a little bit of a challenge. The other thing there, um, is, uh, I know, I know that, uh, we're preparing and I'm not sure if already went out, but I did have reports from the departments, um, and those will be, uh, in your possession today. Uh, then what we'll do is in the future, we'll talk about those probably in those one or one and a half hour chunks of time at the study sessions. That's all, Mayor. Just wanted to put that out there for your consideration.
Thank you so much for bringing that up because, you know, as a, uh, being on the council side, I had another job, right? And I absolutely understand the time constraints, um, by my colleagues on the council uh, that have another job. And so absolutely, I think that we can take advantage of the study sessions and how we structure those study sessions to continue having those budget discussions and not necessarily have to add on another retreat. Uh, for those that are workers and, and, and must, you know, sometimes use vacation time or whatever time, uh, that's their own for, for this. So I absolutely understand and let's, let's do that. I, I think that, um, in the discussions that we have at a, in the discussions that we have at, at Agenda, we can say, okay, in this particular study session, we want to hear from these departments and, you know, these other issues at the, at the budget agenda item. So I'm totally open to that. I appreciate my colleagues in investing their time in these conversations. I think that the more we have these discussions, the closer we get to what we need in terms of the priorities of my colleagues. So absolutely. Anything else? Alrighty. We're on time, people. Great job, everyone. Thank you all so much. Really appreciate it and have a great rest of your week.